I will now call it July 1st, 2018, Blue Springs City Council meeting order. If you would stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and I will lead you in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Want to welcome you to attendance as well as those that might be watching it on YouTube later. Next we have the consent agenda unless there are items that need to be pulled, except the motion for approval.
So moved.
Their second.
Second.
Roll call please.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman Levinson?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Erickson?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next we have a public hearing to approve industrial development project for Dervet, Incorporated.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. City council information form dated June 25, 2019 with attachments including a notice of publication, a notice of public hearing to taxing jurisdictions sent on June 11, 2019, and bill number 4679 with a plan for industrial development project and a performance agreement between the city and the company attached as exhibits A and B. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Thank you, Ms. Culpepper.
Mayor and members of the city council, thank you for the time this evening. This is a public hearing to be held to receive public comment on a bill approving a plan for industrial development project for the benefit of Dervet, Inc. Upon conclusion of the public hearing, a bill approving the plan for an industrial development project pursuant to chapter 100 of the revised statutes of Missouri and a performance agreement between the city and the company will be ready for introduction and readings. This is a project that we have talked about a number of times now, a 54,000 square foot addition to Dervet's facility at 100 Magellan Drive. The improvements and construction costs associated with the expansion is $6.5 million with approximately $2 million estimated to be spent on construction materials. The improvements will be located on real estate within the city with an estimated current value of $3.1 million, which includes the land and existing buildings. The company's requested a real property tax abatement of 100% on the project site and project improvements for a period of 10 years and a sales tax exemption on construction materials during the construction period. Over the life of the 10-year property tax abatement, the company will make a payment in lieu of taxes to all taxing jurisdictions for the value of the taxes they currently pay. So we're certainly not taking anything off the books that's currently on the books. With that said, we have representatives from the company here, we have our, we have Todd Munsterman, president of Dervet, Rich Cook, their attorney, as well as Sid Douglas, our outside bond counsel for any questions you may have.
First of all, councils, are there any questions on Mr. Culpepper? Saying none. Want any matter from Dervet? Do Dervet like to come and be sworn in and speak?
I do. I just want to thank the council and the city staff for consideration of the project and just say again-
Did you get name and address and all that? Okay, and you're swearing in, you need to give her your name and address and all that.
Todd Munsterman.
100 Southeast Magellan Drive, Blue Springs, Missouri.
Thank you.
Okay, now you can-
Missed that last time, that's why I didn't do it this time. But hey, just want to thank you again for consideration of the project and just again, the whole project and Tom, to Eric, to everybody that we worked with has just been phenomenal and just want to say we appreciate that. So, any questions for me?
Your honor, I just would like to say that we are very pleased that Dervet has decided to stay with us in Blue Springs. Good partner. We appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate it likewise.
Any others? Well, I think we all echo those same sentiments, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay. Sid, I don't know if there's a need for you to talk unless the council has some questions, so we're going to go straight to the public. Is there any one that would like to speak and support up? Support up. Opposition two. Opposition two. Close this public hearing. Who would like to introduce bill number 4679?
I'll introduce, your honor.
Okay.
First reading of bill number 4679 in ordinance approving a plan for an industrial development project for the benefit of Dervet, Inc., and authorizing certain other actions by the city.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
The second?
Second.
Discussion? I'll invite Ryan. All in favor? Same sign.
Second reading of bill number 4679 in ordinance approving a plan for an industrial development project for the benefit of Dervet, Inc., and authorizing certain other actions by the city.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Councilmember Levinson?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4836.
Next we'll have the second reading of bill 4673 amending the Unified Development Code to adopt regulations relating to solar energy system. And then we're, once we have the motion and the second, and when we go to discussion, we're going to go to council member Erickson for amendments.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second?
I'm sorry, I haven't read it yet.
Oh, you didn't read it?
No, I need to do the second reading first, I'm sorry. Second reading of bill number 4673 in ordinance amending various sections and subsections in title four, chapters 401 through 411 Unified Development Code of the Code of Ordinances City of Blue Springs, Missouri to adopt regulations for solar energy systems.
Okay, now you-
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its second final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Okay. We're going to go to, for discussion, and also for amendments, we're going to council member Erickson.
Your honor, I would like to move to amend bill number 4673 in three places. First to add, and I quote, "And shall be screened as required under the provisions of this section," end quote, "to the end of the first sentence of section 405.060.Alpha.7.Echo." And second to add, I forgot to close the quotes, excuse me. And second to add, and I quote, "And roof-mounted solar panels shall not be allowed on the primary street-facing roof plane," end quote, "to the section, to the end of the section And third, to add to the sentence, quote, "Unless mounted flush, solar panels shall be screened on all four sides at a minimum of 50% of the tallest height of the solar panel structure from all adjacent streets or properties with the material that matches or complements the architecture of the building," end quote, "at the section, at the end of the section 405.060.Alpha.7. Golf."
Any council members brave enough to second that?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any comments on the amendment? Yes.
Go ahead.
Oh, did you go?
The petition you're asking for, is that for all solar or is that for residential or commercial?
All. Okay. Did that answer all? Does that answer, satisfy your question?
Well, it's an answer, so I'll leave it at that.
Councilman Levinson, then we'll come down to councilman Fowler.
First, just to have a clarifying question. Can these be dealt with individually or does it need to be done as a single vote?
He made the motion as a single vote.
At least for now.
Yeah, so unless you want to divide them.
I'll wait until the conversation, but I was just curious.
Councilman Fowler.
Yes, your honor. I do appreciate the discussion the planning commission had when it went through there. I was, as mayor pro tem, I attend the planning commission and they had a good discussion. I certainly understand how I've been solicited from homes associations that are interested in further regulations and I understand that. And they, home associations can certainly amend their association bylaws and covenants to add restrictions in there. This seems to be going a bit too far for me when it comes to residential. While I support the home associations, I do support the right of individuals to have solar at their house as well. So, I've seen some houses out there and seen it on the street-facing side of the road and it seems okay to me, so.
Okay. And the one down this way. Councilman Edmondson.
You too? Okay, I'll go first.
You're going to debate who, which one?
I do have some issues with this in the fact that we're trying to be responsible, we're trying to encourage people to be, you know, recycle, try to make use of alternative sources, and now we're putting restrictions on them and saying, no, you can't do this, no, you can that. You know, in essence, and it's, and it's an exaggeration, but I'm using it anyway. You know, by going and saying that you can in residential areas or even commercial area, you can't put something that faces the main street, basically we're eliminating half, and I'm exaggerating, I know, half the, half the houses in Blue Springs, say. Or we're eliminating a third of the houses in Blue Springs being able to use solar energy. I've talked to just a few people and a few business associates. There's a big cost in going into that, so you want to try to maximize your return on solar against your utility bill. Several people I've talked to that have done solar already and have it to where it is facing a street. I mean, they're seeing, already on their second month of having installed, they're already seeing returns on what they have invested. And if you start restricting that, the returns are going to drop and it's going to get to a point where there's not enough return to, incentive to make them want to go ahead and do this, which basically means we're going to choke off what we want to have. And to me, what we want to have is have clean energy. I mean, that's, that's an obvious thing or why you could do it. So, I, I can't be in favor of what we're talking about here.
Councilman Culpepper?
Well, I've had some complaints about people who have had solar stuck on their roofs. And so, my concern is if you're living in a subdivision and your neighbor across the street decides to put solar on all four sides of his roof, what does that, I mean, that to me is not right. I think that, I'm all in favor of solar, but I also am in favor of protecting everybody's rights, if you will. So, I think that, I just am not in favor of putting them on the face of houses. If you go down to Main Street, I am not in favor of them facing the main street. You have three other sides of your house, you can put them, you know, in your backyard, wherever. So I'm just not in favor of that.
Mayor Ross?
Councilmember Fowler, you said, I thought you said, and maybe it was a slip, eliminate solar. That's not what the purpose of this. This is to eliminate solar on the street front of the house. People can still do that. And two, the concerns about green energy and solar, I'm not very well versed on this. I just saw the email yesterday. KCPN L does have a service now where they generate solar. You don't know that you're getting the solar, but you can buy into that for five to $10 a month more and, and be a green energy person. It's just not on your roof. So, we do have that ability, we just don't know which piece of that solar is going to go to whomever. So, I actually like this better. I know this is restricting, but I agree with councilmember Culpepper that there is some aesthetic value as well.
Let me ask this question. It's certain components of what you just proposed, maybe some can support part of it, not all of it, so maybe we need to ask for a division of the question.
Your honor, I would like the division.
Okay, so you make a motion, division of the question?
I make a motion to divide the questions.
Okay. I thought that's where we were trying to go. Into three parts.
Three parts.
Okay.
Is there three parts to the-
Three parts.
Yes, sir. Three parts.
Okay. So, there's a motion to divide the question. Unless there's discussion, all in favor, I?
We sit.
Oh, did you get a second on a division of the question?
No.
I'll second it.
Okay, you got a second?
What are the divisions going to be?
Well, you got three sections.
Okay.
Was this handed out?
No.
It's on the agenda.
No. It's the highlighted.
Yeah.
Highlighted areas? Okay, so that is, is it three questions, right? It can be divided into three sections.
That's correct, yeah. There were three separate amendments to E, F, and G.
Your honor?
Yes.
Can we have, Mike put up the pictures I gave him on, just so all, all the council members can see and staff can see some solar on the roofs?
Do we have that?
Yeah, councilmember Kayler sent those to me just before the meeting. I'm happy to bring them up if that's what the council desires.
Yes.
Okay. And then he can walk us through what they are.
This one, here's your Commerce Bank on 7th Highway, which is one of five pictures I took of that, and they literally have solar on all areas of roof. Front, backside, top section of roof, everywhere. And then I've got some of residential, believe the first one will be 19th and Clark, and they have, that faces east. Now, my understanding is the best way to get solar to the capacity out of it is to face southwest. And this one is facing east, not even southeast, but east. And then they have a section which I, shows another side of it on the, on the south side. And then there is another picture of one at Third and Walnut that this one faces southeast. And not, neither one of those directly have most of their solar on, even on the southwest where you get the most portion. Now, I would ask that councilmember Edmondson, on the, the burr that was on downtown, we, we had to adjust because of downtown ordinance of some sort, we had to adjust the panels so they wouldn't be seen. Well, when you adjust the panels, you lose the capacity of what you full, fully installed. So you would, the less of the angle of the solar, you're going to lose a percentage of your solar power that you can receive from the sun. But I just want street views there, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew what a street view looked like with the solars on it. And I just, thank you, Mike, for putting this up. Thank you, your honor.
Your honor?
Yes.
Mike, we had this discussion about setbacks and, and the putting the, I say camouflage, what's the word I'm looking for?
The screen.
Screening.
Yes.
And how that may or may not affect the solar panels. Can you address that?
To a certain degree, we, I can address it. Depending on where, if this is, we're talking about two different applications. The pictures before you would be solar panels mounted on a sloped roof. For solar panels mounted on a flat roof, as you would see in maybe a commercial application, the proposed amendment of having the screen wall be 50% of the height of the structure, depending on where that screen wall or screen structure is in relation to the solar panel, if it's located far enough away, it may not have any impact on the ability for that solar panel to catch the sun. If it's located too close, it may impact it, depending on the angle of it and things like that.
Well, didn't you say though that there, you have to have a certain amount of distance between the screening and-
There, yes.
Where you can put air conditioners or what have you on your roof?
Yes, there's a, and it's in the fire code. I believe it's either two or three feet, I think it's three feet, that you have to have as a clearance from around the perimeter of a solar panel installation so that people can basically walk around it. And so theoretically, if it's three feet away, then that shouldn't block the solar panel from being up. But that is also a function of how tall that solar panel is versus how tall the screen wall is. But yeah, there's a three-foot separation.
Councilman Kayler?
So, the petition, correct me if I'm wrong, petition or the wall, so to speak, is 50%? You can't see the solars, solar panels? Is that what we're saying?
No, you'd still be able to see, potentially, half of them.
Okay. Well, I would suggest that we, we see rooftop air conditioners all around, and I don't know what to be the difference between sort of panels, the solar panels compared to the air conditioner, being able to see the rooftop units. If they're considered to be an isolator, rooftop units could be considered that, so.
Well, rooftop units are supposed to be screened.
That's correct. Rooftop units on new construction, when, since that code has been adopted, should be fully screened from view of public rights of way, or residential properties. There may be some that are out there in the city that have been in place a lot longer than, prior to that code being adopted.
Councilman Levinson?
Mike, can you go back to that second picture, the 19th and Clark? I was at the planning commission meeting as well that councilmember Fowler talked about. And I think the comments from the planning commission chair, Lynn Banks, are probably most on point to what councilmember Edmondson is saying. And this is a great example of that. If you look at this house, the front-facing, street-facing roof is the only place they could put that panel and get anything out of it because there's trees all the way around. So what Lynn said was, you got to put the panels where the sun is. And I'm less concerned about the greenness of the energy as I am about the cost savings to the resident. And, and just as councilmember Edmondson said, you want to capitalize that savings, especially if you're putting the extreme investment of this kind of money into a residential unit. I don't find them personally to have any aesthetic problems. I think they look just like the roof does and they don't bother me, so I know that's a matter of opinion. But I think just from a practical standpoint and an economical standpoint, you have to allow street-facing panels to be placed in, otherwise it doesn't make any sense to do it. I think that's what councilmember Edmondson was saying, or essentially by restricting that, cutting some portion of the city out of the possibility. And that's, that's not really our role to restrict it. There's other ways, as councilmember Fowler said, if the HOAs are concerned, they can make those adjustments. But I drive by, of these five pictures, I drive three of them to get here. And I mean, they're in my neighborhood, that one is, I drive by every day and it doesn't bother me in the least, so. But I feel the same way.
We had a motion and we had a second. We've already had discussion without taking a vote on whether we're going to approve dividing the question or not. So the vote will be, we have a motion and a second to divide the question into three parts.
So we're amending the first one?
No, 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 we're not, no. First we have to have a motion of whether we're going to divide the question or not. So, the question is, do you support or vote in favor of dividing the question? That's what's before you right now.
Okay.
Councilman-
Kayler.
Kayler.
And seconded by Erickson. So, all in favor of dividing the questions into three parts, say aye.
Aye.
Don't know how that came out. Roll call it, please.
Okay. Councilmember Fowler?
No.
No, not to divide. Okay. Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levinson?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried.
Okay, so we're going to divide it into three parts. Okay, Mike?
Do you want me to read this?
Want you, you want to read it?
Either way.
Okay, you can read it and you can explain it.
Okay, that works.
All right. The first motion is a motion to amend bill number 4673 by adding the words, quote, "and shall be screened as required under the provisions of this section," end quote, "to the end of the first sentence of section 405.060.a.7e."
So what, what this amendment does is, the first sentence of, of provision E says, "Solar energy systems are exempt from all screening standards under 407090H." That's the section that was previously referenced in the code under the design standards, non-residential design standards that requires all rooftop mechanical equipment or ground-mounted mechanical equipment to be screened in its entirety from the, the view of a adjacent public right-of-way or residential property. So the first provision had originally said, "Solar panels are exempt from all screening requirements." Due to the, the subsequent provision in G, we felt it was appropriate to say, "Except as otherwise provided," basically herein. And so, that's, that's that amendment under E.
Okay, do you understand the first part?
No.
No, I don't either.
Okay. What part don't you understand? We'll go to councilmember Culpepper and then come to you.
Well, it says, "Shall be screened as required under the provisions of this section," but then, then, then where are you going? Then you jump down to F? Is that where you went?
It would, it'd be under G, where it talks about the screening of the, on a flat.
So, E says, if you vote yes on E, then you're voting yes on G. Is that right?
That's essentially my point as well.
It's kind of the way I'm reading this.
Yes, that's the only other way, that's the only way that we're, that, that's the only portion that the language that would provide for screening of solar units, yes, is in letter G.
So you take the highlighted in E and G, and that's what we're voting on?
Yeah, E would be, or G would be contingent on E and-
Your honor, I think, excuse me, I think that there's, the first one can stand alone because if you voted this one down, then it's not provided, or someone could offer an amendment to make it 100% or 20% or 10% or whatever.
Okay. Legal counsel, is that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I would agree with that statement.
I have a couple of questions. So, one's just a grammatical thing. In E, if we're saying everything is exempt, shouldn't that be but, shall be screened as required in this provision, not and shall be screened? Because you're saying exempt, but it's screened under this provision.
Well, what we were trying to say with and is that they're exempt from all of the other screening requirements. So we have a separate section for non-residential that contains screening of rooftop mechanical equipment, screening for dumpsters, screening for other things. We're saying, none of that applies.
But this does.
And, they, and they shall be screened according to these standards.
That one's fine. You guys will be the ones that have to deal with that, so that was just the thing.
Yeah.
So then, so then my question is G, I don't quite understand G. I know previously it was no more than 10 feet above the highest point. So what is G telling us?
Well, we had a, we had staff draw up a diagram of to what this could look like, and I also have a picture, if I could show those. In essence, if you have a screen wall, say, for example, on the new, the new city hall building, there's a, there's a metal screen wall around one of the rooftop units. It's a grayish fence material, and that conceals one of the rooftop units so that you can't see it. Forcia has some of that as well. What G is proposing is that unless it's flush-mounted to the roof, which basically means flat or, you know, no less than 12 inches or so off of the roof, maybe two feet, very close to the roof plane, as was shown in those pictures on the sloped roof, unless it's mounted in that configuration, that a rooftop solar unit on a flat roof can still be up to 10 feet tall. But however tall it ends up being, half of that height has to be a screen fence or some sort of screening around it.
So if it's 10 feet, you need a five-foot fence?
Yes, if it's six feet off, you need three feet.
But if it's flush-mounted, you don't need screening at all, according to this.
Right. I think councilmember Erickson and I talked about this. This, with the screening, because it'll be far enough away, it's not going to like cast a shadow over the panels. It's still going to allow for-
Maybe.
Plenty of sun to reach the panels for purposes of that.
Does this apply to residential as well?
Yeah, that's my question.
It, it would apply to residential, except we don't have a lot of flat roof residential properties. So this, this diagram here shows a building situated kind of, let's say for on Main Street at the, you know, right adjacent to the sidewalk with two-way traffic. And the line of sight would be a person looking up here. The, the height of the maximum solar panel is still 10 feet, but that any kind of screen wall, be it a parapet wall, which is the, the false kind of wall that's around the front and sides of buildings oftentimes, or a screen fence or some sort of screen would have to come up half the height of the solar panel structure.
And then, you're talking commercial buildings. 99% of them have air conditioners or units up on their roof and have screening anyway? or units up on their roof and have screening anyway.
Yes, they may have, yeah, a lot of them are going to have screening, especially if they're a newer building. The screening may be consisting of a parapet wall that's around the perimeter, but it also may be the way the city did it on City Hall, which is just a fence, in essence, around the unit itself. So not just because they're screening up there for the existing rooftop units, it may not catch the solar panels in all instances.
Thank you.
Okay, are you ready to vote on division number one? Councilman Ed, or Councilmember Ed?
If you don't mind me making a comment, because it's been brought up on this on a commercial flat roof. A perfect example is East 40 Brewery. They went through and put in solar on the roof. I believe their solar sits at 11 inches off the surface, and maybe 12. I don't remember, and if you do, correct me on it, but I believe it's either 11 or 12 inches. When they did that, they had it engineered. They had somebody come in and say, this is going to get you this percentage at that level. They can do that. It is not getting 100% because it's not at the optimum angle to be able to generate solar. That plays into how much you put on the roof. For them to try to get where they wanted to go with the solar, they were going to put it on the actual slope roof on the front of the awning or whatever comes out in front of the building. They wanted to put solar on that, which would help them more. That was turned down too because downtown said that was facing a street. They wouldn't allow that. So we've hit him twice on that. The other issue I have, I guess, would be is now we're imposing, not only are they going to the cost of the solar, but now they're going to have to pay for engineering for a parapet. They're going to have to come for the height of the screening. That has to come in. That's going to come through. That's another permitting process, I believe, if I'm not wrong. So now you're going through engineering designs, the cost of doing that. So when you start throwing all this stuff in, it plays into whether the cost-effectiveness of solar is. And that's my against what's going on, is that I think we're just over-regulating and over-causing costs to a project that'll defer somebody from doing that project. And that gets back to the construction industry, and they say, oh, it's difficult to do Blue Springs because they want you to do all this stuff. So that's kind of my basis on where I'm at on this thing, just to throw it out so you know where I'm going.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Appreciate you for the offer to say, time to say that.
You made it very plain. Okay, now, to do it, we will need a motion.
Can we see those three things if you're...
Yes, absolutely. I would just like to, Councilmember Edmondson, they would need a separate permit, the solar installation permit, which is usually handled by the solar company, and then any type of building modification, screen wall, parapet wall, would be a separate permit, separate contractor. Probably wouldn't be done even by the solar company. So just to clarify that.
Okay, thank you.
We'll need a motion and a second, and then a vote.
So we're just talking then about this and shall be screened as required under the provisions of this section?
Yes.
That's all we're talking about, right?
That's all we're talking about right now. That's the first part.
All right, thank you.
Okay, now, is there a motion to approve the first part?
So moved.
I've already moved.
Okay, so we got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. We've had a lot of discussion. I'll ask for it anyway. Is there any further discussion?
May I have one more? I could do this at the bottom, but I think the councils should be aware that 36 degrees is the, is the, this latitude's toward the south. That's the, what I want to say, the optimum angle. So if we do a little bit of rough estimate, estimating, if you have a 15-foot-long panel, that panel's only going to be seven and a half feet. If it's 30 degrees, about eight feet, 8.5 feet maybe, above the surface. A 15-foot-long panel is a huge panel.
Yes.
So where I'm going with this, before we, and this maybe goes into the third section, where I'm going with this is, a lot of these panels are four feet long. If it's four feet long, to get the maximum, you're only going to have that thing raised up two and a half feet. So it's a line-of-sight issue, and I don't believe that we're looking at seven-foot-high or six-foot-high walls around the building. I think it's a more of a minimal addition to the, to the structure.
Okay.
And I'm done.
So we've had the motion, we've had the second, we've had lots of discussion. To make sure, let's roll call this to make sure we know who's voting how.
All right. Councilmember Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
No.
Cole Pepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
No.
Levisay?
No.
Fowler?
No.
Mayor Ross?
No.
Motion fails with a vote of 5 to 2.
Okay, let's go to the second part.
All right. The second motion to amend bill number 4673 reads as follows, "To add and, the quote, 'And roof-mounted solar panels shall not be allowed on the primary street-facing roof plane,' period, end quote, to the end of section 405.060.a.7.f.'"
That one's pretty self-explanatory, but if you need any further explanation, Mike stands ready.
And I have a picture as well, if anybody would like that. But this would apply to any slope roof, whether it's in a commercial or residential setting.
Yeah, yeah, you got the picture?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I have the pictures that Councilmember Kayler showed us earlier of the ones facing the street, and then we had one drawn up. So this is actually very similar. We drew it off of the one at Nineteenth and Clark, actually, where you have the primary street-facing facade here, and then a secondary street. Under the proposed amendments, there would be no solar panels allowed installed on this roof plane, as it is the primary front roof, street-facing roof plane. Solar panels would be allowed on this secondary street-facing roof plane, this other one, and also on this back one here.
Okay.
So, can you go back to the statement again, please? So this is residential and commercial?
Right.
Okay, so you've seen it. Is there a motion to approve the second amendment?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Mike, could you clarify paragraph I, that speaks to potential shading issues, orientation, et cetera, where you could literally, as I understand it, vary that in-house?
Yeah, the provisions under I's, in essence, the ability of the community development director to grant administrative variance or administrative relief to these sections or these standards, if it can be demonstrated that compliance with the regulations is impractical due to such issues as shading, building orientation, construction constraints, or configuration of the parcel. So it does allow the city to administratively waive or modify or alter some of these regulations if it can be shown that they just are impractical, given the lot or the house orientation or the business orientation on a given property.
That answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Johnson?
Your Honor, just, for those of you on the council who've been here a long time, you know that these issues ebb and flow over time as opinions, attitudes change, as technology changes. We used to have, years ago, because I've almost been here 20 years now, I've seen this cycle a couple of times, we used to have a situation where the council wanted to give staff less discretion, and they wanted more information to, decisions to come to the council. And then we went through a process where the city council said, well, we need to speed things up because for businesses, time is money, and let's, let's establish policy, and then let's let staff implement, and let's, let staff have a certain level of latitude and discretion. That is what you see before you in I, and in the event that there may be someone out of the seven elected officials up here who don't agree with the decision staff makes, well, then we would find ourselves in a position where we'd have to come back to you and say, all right, well, then you tell us what you want the rules to be, and we will try to apply them. But we have been attempting over the last few years to work as a, as a business-friendly community to try to expedite projects, but do it in a way that is aesthetically pleasing, always trying to raise the bar to make our community better.
Good point. Appreciate that. Councilman Cole Pepper, then Councilman Fowler.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. I think the fact that we do have the ability to make adjustments to this, to me, that is, that is the better way to do it. It gives state, from my perspective, it gives staffs guidelines, and then if there are reasons why those guidelines can't be met, they, it gives them the discretion to go ahead and make necessarily, necessary adjustments.
Councilman Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor, specifically to F there, roof-mounted solar panels shall not be allowed on the primary street-facing roof pane. Councilman Kayler, you mentioned southwest is a great angle. Well, for the houses that face west, for the houses that face south, that could kill them on their opportunity to have solar. So I think this is so an overwhelming sweep that I just can't support it. It really knocks out a lot of solar for a lot of people.
I'd like to respond to my colleague.
Yes.
Yes, southwest is the best, but I just showed you several pictures that didn't have it going to the southwest, and that there is the opportune, opportune time to, that other people have gone different directions with it. I agree, southwest is the best out of all of it to make sure you get that 100% out of the, out of the solar panel. But there is four sides to a residential, and I personally don't see why it can't be that way.
Anyone else?
Your Honor, the house on Nineteenth Street, those panels, the main panels face the east. There's a house out in Willery, and it's a gorgeous house, and they have panels. They're not noticeable. They're on the side of the house. They face the west. So, you know, it's all doable.
Well, except for the one on Nineteenth and Clark, that, you've already showed that that would not meet this requirement, right?
But they have panels on two sides of the house.
They do have panels on that south side.
Yes.
So are, be economical, just have it on the south side?
That's right, raised the question, so.
What was your question?
Well, it'd be, right now it's facing the east, and so they're not getting, yeah, east and south. So the east, they're not getting optimum amount of solar lighting that they should get. And I don't know, I haven't talked to the people to see if they're actually benefiting with those panels facing east. Because we're saying optimum is south and west. They can't do west because you got trees behind there, and I don't think they're going to really get it. I'm not sure the sun is going to allow them to get it with the trees back there. I don't know. I'm just asking the question.
Your Honor, we, we discussed, Mike and I discussed about doing amendments on the fly, and hence we talked about this and how to do these things. But it's difficult for me to describe the angles of the sun and the south-southwest. It's, south-southwest, it's really not southwest. It's more at an angle, and that angle changes during the year. But the sun, even on where there's a tree, unless they have that tree pretty darn close to the house, that sun still comes down and provides that angle. It's a perpendicular, I don't know where the sun is now. Let's say it's like that at 3 o'clock. It's perpendicular to that panel, if it's, if it's perfect. And it's not like if the house has shade, it's not eliminated from that, from that ability to gather that sun. It's difficult to look at unless you sit there and you think, there's my straight line of the sun, there's my panel, let's tip it, and let's see what we do. I don't, obviously, I don't believe this is going to curtail much, except for the street fronts.
Okay. One thing I think just worth mentioning, in my neighborhood, I only have two sides of my roof. I don't have four. So by cutting off the street-facing, it's cutting mine in half. Now, granted, the people in my neighborhood probably can't afford to put solar panels on the roof, but it is still a concern. You're cutting out, again, a large portion of the population.
Okay, so we had a motion, we had a second. Have we had enough discussion yet? Okay, let's roll call it.
Councilman Edmondson?
No.
Councilman Cole Pepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman Levisay?
No.
Councilman Fowler?
No.
Councilman Erickson?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Motion carries. The vote of 4 to 3.
Then we move down to number 3.
Okay. The third motion to amend bill number 4673 is to add the sentence, quote, "Unless mount flush, mounted flush solar panels shall be screened on all four sides at a minimum of 50% of the tallest height of the solar panel structure from all adjacent streets or properties with material that matches or complements the architecture of the building," at the end of section 405.060.a.7.g.
Is there a motion? Ask one more time, and then if there's not a motion...
I would make the motion. I already did the motion to amend, so I don't know if that's appropriate.
Yeah.
If it is, then I would move to, to accept G.
The Third Amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Does that need an explanation? I think the reading pretty much explained it, but does anyone need any further explanation? I don't see anyone saying to do.
Your Honor...
Okay, so you had a motion. Has there been a second? Did you, anybody second it?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now we get into discussion.
I just, I just want to say that I am going to vote for this because of item I.
Okay. Anybody else? Any further discussion? Matt, roll call.
Councilman Cole Pepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
No.
Levisay?
No.
Fowler?
No.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
No.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Motion, uh, motion fails with a vote of 4 to 3.
Okay, so we finally got through that. Now...
Your Honor?
A motion to, yes.
I'm sorry, do you want the photos and the drawings presented by Mr. Mallon made a part of the record?
Might as well.
They won't be part of the public hearing.
They won't, they won't be part of the public hearing, that they're part of this meeting.
Okay. So now we need a motion as amended. The approval of bill 4673 as amended.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, and second? Did you second it? Anybody?
I'll second.
Okay, you got a motion to second. We've had about 45 minutes worth of discussion on it.
I have some additional discussion. I think the, I assume it's going to pass because so far we've got the votes. I think the addition we added in F is so dramatic that I will not support the overall bill because I don't think it's right that that amendment has passed. I assume it will, but if it doesn't, I'd rather go back to the drawing more than, than see this one pass. So I will be voting against it.
All right, anybody else? So we had a motion as amended, do we?
Yes.
We had a second. Let's roll call it again. No further discussion.
Councilmember Kayler?
Aye.
Council, Councilmember Levisay?
No.
Fowler?
No.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
No.
Cole Pepper?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried with the vote of 4 to 3.
Okay, we got through that. Okay, now let's move on to introduction of a reading of bill 4680.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of bill number 4780, an ordinance approving acceptance of the...
4680.
Oh, 4680?
That's it.
Yep, yep. Thank you. First reading of bill number 4680, an ordinance approving acceptance of the right-of-way conveyance documents from property owners abutting the Roanoke Drive improvements.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
There's a second?
Second.
Discussion. I'm in favor of that.
Aye.
I'm saying.
Second reading of bill number 4680, an ordinance approving acceptance of the right-of-way conveyance documents from property owners abutting the Roanoke Drive improvements.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
There's a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Councilwoman Levisay?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Cole Pepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4838.
Next, we move to Merrill announcements, and again, the Fourth of July is coming up on Thursday. We put mailings out to the residents to be safe, smart, and the rest of it, that we will not be having the fireworks display due to construction at both of the high schools. And we would love for people to obey the rules because the rules are out there on the line. There, again, we do this mailing every year. I hear, and today was the first day at 10 o'clock, that you were supposed to be shooting off fireworks, but I heard them being shot off last night, and I don't think our tents were open, so they probably brought it, bought it somewhere else and brought it to Blue Springs. And some of it going off certainly was not within the restrictions that we place on them.
That's right.
But you can buy them anywhere.
Yes, you can.
But we also want people to know that if they see people violating, or hear people violating, that we have extra police officers on duty, and all they have to do is call the knocker, and we will investigate.
If I may, Your Honor?
Yes. But we also want people to know that if they see people violating, or hear people violating, that we have extra police officers on duty, and all they have to do is call the neighbor and we will investigate.
If I may, Your Honor?
Yes.
Compliments to the chief on his public service announcement on that. I thought they did very well with that. So thumbs up, yes.
Did them. Okay, we're going to go to Administrator Johnson.
Your Honor, the city attorney just pointed out to me, I believe we do have a Scrivener's error on the agenda with regard to item number 7. On the main agenda, it referred, it says ordinance, or bill number 4680, and then when our city clerk read it, she said 4780. That's just a typo. So, you did, you did. But I wanted to, I wanted to let you know that there was a discrepancy on the, on the agenda, and it's simply a Scrivener's error. That will be fixed.
Okay. Let's move to Costa Punda. Now really, it's from Zig Ziglar, and I really like this one. And I quote, "People often say that motivation doesn't last. Well, Nita does bathing. That's why we recommend it daily," end quote. Don't have anything else, so I accept a motion to adjourn.